I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we get started with our regular meeting business, the council has requested time to get a resolution approved. So Roy wants to come on up, we'll get that done, then we'll get into our regular business cycle.
This is actually for the redevelopment commission, more of this for the council. But the redevelopment commission, as is well-known, has entered into a purchase agreement to purchase the old National Bank building. That has continued to be delayed, not by our doings, but it's involved in a multiple property swap. And there's been some delays on it. We were hopeful that that would have been finalized a long time ago. But in the interest of planning for the future, when we do have it and we do start the rehabilitation and repurpose of that building, the redevelopment commission is seeking the approval of the commissioners to have the ability to enter into debt for that project. The debt would be paid back entirely by the TIP districts, the central and the west central park TIP districts entirely. And this resolution identifies that. It is not a known situation that the redevelopment commission will have to enter into any debt for it. It does not need to do that to purchase it. And certainly, to some extent, the longer this drags out, the less the opportunity might present itself to have to do that. But in order for the commission to have that opportunity to do so, we need the blessing of the commissioners. Last month, or last meeting you guys had, which I apologize for not being able to make due to death in the family, you adopted or agreed to the redevelopment commission's resolution that lays out the whole process by which we would be able to do that. That is an open-ended document that allows the flexibility to go through either bonding or commercial notes. It is not the position of the commission in and of itself to do any bonding, they're too expensive. We're not looking at a large borrow in any particular situation here. So the idea of the commercial note is more palatable to us if we so need to have to do so.
Lee, is it a tool you already got in your box and you need it?
What's that?
It's a tool you already have in your box.
Yeah, that's all it is. It's just giving us that tool to use if necessary. And it also ties in the commission and the town and the county, all in agreement, that the TIP districts will fund the project.
Okay. Do we have a resolution number?
Zero six.
Zero six.
Zero five was last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. You guys have any questions, Roy?
No.
Got a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution two thousand twenty-four oh six, which again allows the redevelopment commission to issue notes, tax increment notes if necessary.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay, no one opposed? I do have a question.
Sure.
Not for you, but maybe you know.
If it's a question that you text, I don't know the answer, but maybe.
There's a line here that says that these things are subject to, Mr. Law, you'll know this, mandatory sinking fund redemption. Never heard of that term before.
Give me a few minutes, I can tell you about it.
Well, I can just tell you, sinking fund normally is a, it's like a debt service fund, where you set aside money to be able to pay those notes. In other words, that gets set aside first to make sure those notes can be paid before.
Okay.
Now whether that's what that language is for sure, I don't know, but that.
It's a requirement that the issuer redeem usually annually or semi-annually portions of the principal amount of the related term bonds in accordance with a schedule called a sinking fund installment schedule at a price equal to such principal amount.
Normal amortization schedule.
Yeah, yeah. Why they call it that? And so they are the sinking fund thing. It's interesting thing. Okay. It's been brewed, and you need all three of our signatures, correct?
Yeah, and I have a monitor, you'd send that over afterwards, we could send that to the bond. One of them, I guess it's after the fact, but we did reach out to several banks at this point that they're willing this agreement to do a loan, based on TIP revenues. Because, you know, the courthouse debt is in a debt fund, and we're statutorily required to tax enough to pay that, right? Well, the TIP district doesn't work that way, so we do have the blessing that all of them were willing to accept that as a it's not necessarily guaranteed stream of revenue like property taxes would be. And we, as the council, have to levy a certain amount to pay that debt requirement.
For those who don't know, TIP funds, what we're talking about, they're, you declare an area for development, and at that point, when you declared it to be a TIP area, it's called tax increment funding. The property taxes gained by the county from that location are fixed at that amount, and then any improvements beyond that with new taxes going in, those new taxes then are directed to be used for economic development. And that's what this lease funding is for. So there's no tax increase, it's just a different revenue stream which ways it going. It's sort of general, it's going toward this economic development process. So it's no additional taxes, that type of thing. Do you think I should need?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Roy.
All right, we'll commence with the regular, regular order of business now. So we have minutes from eleven to four.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from eleven to four.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, next we have payroll, and two of them, of course, in the amount of two hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred and three dollars and ninety-nine cents, and then the Union Hospital Security amount of one thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll as presented.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. Okay. All right. We've already done that. So then we have, need to acknowledge receipt of payroll claims, council payable report in the amount of two hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and seven cents.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge your receipt of payroll as presented.
And I'll second that.
Claims.
Claims, yeah, over there.
I'll get it here in a minute.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
What's the date then?
Eighteen.
Okay.
One more, Jim.
All right, then we have claims. I don't have the number there.
No. No. Sorry.
Oh. When we want for claims then. We just did the resolution. So we have holiday schedule to do. And this is twelve, election year is typically thirteen, if you have election day in there.
And it's off the state website.
Yeah. They always try to coincide with the state, because it's tough to do business for the offices if it's not. And October thirteenth will be during Cover Bridge Festival for Columbus Day, so it'll be real Columbus Day. Any questions, guys? Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve the holiday schedule as presented.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Then we have the commission meeting schedule. Looks like we only have one holiday interfering with this last year.
Hell, there should be two, January twentieth, Monday, that's Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Office is closed, so that'll be the twenty-first, Tuesday.
I'll get that updated.
Okay. So January sixth, is that still a date to not use? Oh no, that's the first day, I got you.
It's the second.
So the twentieth, we strike off the twentieth.
Twenty-first is the twenty-first, that's correct, because that's good, Martin Luther King Day.
Yes, okay. So with that modification now.
I was just looking to see Labor Day, September first. She's got it changed.
Already changed the due date.
Columbus Day's not an issue.
Nope.
Yeah, I don't see anything else. The brush looks good to me.
Are you motioning?
With that, I'll make a motion, we approve the commissioner's meeting schedule as presented for two thousand twenty-five.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll email it to you.
Yeah, I can carry it with me this way too, so.
Okay.
You both, but I, that way I have it with me if I got a question, everybody. All right. Then we have council's schedule. I don't know if that's anything we have to deal with.
They were just in the packet, so.
So then a council payable claims schedule. Anything here we need to know? Anything abnormal?
Shouldn't be.
You have new in office Monday, January twentieth, do you want to change that to the twenty-first also?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys see anything else? I make a motion, we approve the claims schedule as presented.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. The copper project. Do you need paperwork on that?
I did not give you paperwork, but it's just out-of-cycle checks.
Okay, yeah, okay. So we have three out-of-cycle checks, go ahead and tell us what those are, please.
The first one, core facilities, is for the copper project at the sheriff's department. It is for sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. The next one is also for core facilities for the exterior, it's five thousand nine hundred forty-two dollars and forty-four cents. And the last one is for the state board of accounts for their financial audit, thirty-three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Am I any questions?
No.
Or motion?
I make a motion, we approve the out-of-cycle checks as presented for the.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We did have one thing that did not make it on the agenda, it came in afterwards. And I gave you a copy of the email, and it's in regards to
Speed limit.
A speed limit.
Yeah. Yep.
And there's a map on the back, if you want to see it.
You guys have any questions?
No. Dick will have to draw up an order to forward it.
Can I forward that to him?
My copy.
Okay, I have a couple things here for you.
For next meeting.
We approved last time to do the doors, so I went into a contract with the gentleman who did those courthouse doors. Get that done before the end of the year, contract before the end of the year. Mike Myers from Audubon Church called and asked about permission again to put the nativity scene on the courthouse, as they've done the last two years, so I make a motion, we approve that.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We need to get the highway superintendent job posted now that we have, things have kind of settled down to where we are. I have had a couple inquiries on that, so with your permission, I'll go ahead and start that process of getting that posted. How long do you want them posted to have them respond before the end of the year?
What did we do last time?
I can't.
I can't remember either. It was at least thirty days.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with thirty days. Maybe between holidays, we might have time to set up some interviews.
So the, if we get that in the paper, or got it announced tomorrow, it's Tuesday, it'll be the nineteenth. How's it count, do I count it while, is it the twenty-ninth? Well, I guess I got one here in the calendar, I couldn't see. Yeah, if we make it to twenty-ninth, no, it wouldn't be, never mind, that's only ten days, it's not thirty days.
Yeah, it needs to be, not November the seventh.
One, two, three, we have commission meeting on the sixteenth, that is.
That's four weeks from today.
We want to make it by the end of day on the thirteenth, and then we can see what they have presented by the third, but on our meeting then.
Sounds good.
Is that your motion then, that way you post it, and have the applications due December thirteenth?
That's your motion, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we're gonna post it, we'll get it to newspapers, we'll get it on Facebook, we'll get it in the news. And Yoder has normal places she posts things, and our website as well. And they will be due the thirteenth, and then we will receive them at our meeting on the sixteenth, and then we'll begin to looking at those, and maybe over the holidays if we can get some, yeah. Interviews in without interviewing too many people, I'll see how that works. Okay, next thing. We talked about moving Buck Vandiver from bridge foreman up to interim superintendent. I talked with the council last week at their meeting about going ahead and moving his salary then from his road foreman, I mean his bridge foreman, to the superintendent salary that Randy was receiving, and moving someone up to the bridge foreman position. And at this time, we're not ready to fill the bridge foreman position, and the council was okay with both of those. But we are, we're ready to fill the interim superintendent position. So I have spoken with Buck, and he's willing to do, he's already been doing it, so we just need a motion to move him up to that salary position as opposed to an hourly position.
Okay, so I'd make a motion, we move Bucky up to the salary position as long as he's in that position, and make the same wages that Randy would have been making, and hold off on the bridge foreman for now.
Until he comes to us with a suitable.
Until we find a permanent.
And I'll second that. He is aware that it's interim position, he is aware that he will apply for the job, and he may be, personally, he may not. But he understands that if that job is filled with someone else, that he will set back the position he's in. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I have spoken finally, this has been a long process, this has been all summer. But I understand our situation between the highway superintendent, so I don't blame them for that. And I don't really blame anyone, they're trying to get a relationship with work, wanting to get this accomplished. We've talked about CDL for some time now, and the state will reimburse for that program. So I'm still waiting for the lady to call, is supposed to call, but I've been through three people getting to her, and she was supposed to call me in the last week, didn't happen. I tried to call her today at Area Thirty in Greencastle. I didn't get answered, but I didn't expect you to, because they're in classes, but I never got a call back on that. Then I got contacted by the other lady in charge of the work one. She's gonna talk to her, see if she'll call me, so I think we'll get this coming together, I don't know. It's just frustrating, it's gonna be. The way that will work is, and I talked to the council about this, we have to pay for the classes upfront ourselves, and then after six months, the state will reimburse us. We will need on our own then to create a contract, and discuss my ideas, how this should work, and how long it should work. Of how long, and they are obligated to work for the county highway if we've arranged this for the CDL. And if they don't, then they can just pay back some prorated amount of that. However, that would be, we have to see how that works, because we should get full reimbursement from the state, but that takes about six months to do. So just so you know where we are on that, so we're waiting to hear from the lady. I've got the guys' names, I've turned the names in. They need to get a permit, and I explained to the other lady, well, it's tough to get working guys, working people, to sign up for a program and go get a permit at their expense until we know what the program is. I mean, how many days is it gonna take, and how long is it gonna take, if it's something they want to do, so I just don't know about that, so.
If they were to quit immediately after the training, would the state still reimburse the county?
We would, we would be reimbursed for it, they would have to pay us under that program. Yep, yep, good question. And you hope that's not the case, but you never know, and I can certainly understand, I mean, that CDL, you make twenty-five, thirty bucks an hour, ain't but three thirty-nine teams. So I wouldn't be surprised to see that occur. But we need drivers, we have, we've got winter coming. We already talked about Marshall Road and Strawberry, we don't have to vote on that today, but if you're okay with that idea, we'll have the guy Warren from Milestone come measure, and we'll see how much he's talking about, and then we'll see how much room we have left to add others to it. If you're okay with doing those, and then whatever we have left beyond that, that works okay?
And now do, we do need to figure out where we're at on that section in two hundred.
Yes, I, well, I'm glad you brought that up.
Because that should have been left over, if we had any left over from last year. That's where it should have went.
Okay. I'll ask them where we are with that, and we can also add that, like I said, it's not very far. We're talking on two hundred north, go out of town here, past the fairgrounds, turn right on two hundred. There's a section up there that's not blacktop, it goes blacktop so far, and then it's gravelled down to the blacktop, and we would like to make that complete blacktop all the way. All right, that's all the extra. Have you guys have anything extra?
No.
Okay, our county nurse is here, and before I have her come up, she spoke the other day at a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, networking meeting, and I just want you guys to know that, just as we expected it to be, especially when we got Stephanie involved, and the new board involved, and new personnel involved, our county high health department really is exemplary in the state, and we'll find out more, we'll go to commissioner meeting. We'll find out, the commissioner conference, we'll find out what a nice relationship we have, and it's working very well. It's only because these people are doing the job, and I appreciate it. You did a good job, by the way, to
Thank you.
explaining what we did, so I was proud of you. I took full credit for everything you did, being a trigger lunch student, I took full credit for your development on that, so. That was all me. Right, yeah? Okay.
Sounds right.
Okay.
In the word of that, when I get speeding tickets, we'll talk to you about my garbage.
No problem, we'll talk about that. No reimbursement, sorry, six months is up, you're done on your own. All right, you already have a grant request.
I do, so I might have not filled this out right, it's my first time asking. So this past year, we were given sleep sacks by the state of Indiana through IDOH, and we have recently found out they're no longer going to just be gifting those to us, and we're expected to buy them. So they were not budgeted for, so we are hoping that you will approve my request to ask to see if the community foundation can help us fund those.
Okay.
So it's gonna be over a thousand dollars, it's looking like one thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars with shipping.
Okay.
Because it'll be tax-free, and we can buy a hundred sleep sacks to help promote safe sleeping for county.
Just so you understand, since you're new at this, because I always get uncomfortable when people come and ask us if they may ask for our secret grant. It's not that we seek the power to approve or disapprove your intentions, it's, we are required by the state to approve all the grants that go out in our name. In case there's a conflict between two entities seeking the same funds, then it falls on us to choose which one we want to pursue. There's no one contesting you for this, so this is kind of an automatic thing, it's up to the foundation, they want to give it or not.
Yeah.
So we just need a motion to approve our request to issue a grant, current request to the foundation.
All right, a motion we approve, Natalie's grant request for the health department.
Thank you. You guys need to sign this, because I gotta finish the.
All in favor say aye.
I'll second.
Okay.
We'll just get it then.
Yeah, just pass it down, and we'll get it for you.
It's not filled out all the way, I gotta have our screen to sign it. This was kind of our solution at the meeting the other night. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep, just you two. Just me, okay. Do you, you want that back, Natalie?
I think it goes to the, I'll take it back, because I gotta finish having Dr.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Jason Fraser, nobody here?
Yes, thank you.
The only other thing that I had that we need to talk about, and seeing Luke again kind of reminds me, we need to get this done. We've been, we've had the moratorium replaced for some time now on the solar power, which need to be, heading out there. Well, we've been waiting for, oh, over a year now, for companies that have met with us to supply us with recommended ordinances and things other counties have. I've talked to Bob Davis Town Sullivan County, what they had, and what they did with theirs, so we can have that to look at. But we need to look at some of those, so we need to proceed on that, because now some people are getting offers from solar companies to get into business, and we have to decide what stands, what role the county even plays in that. So we just need to decide where we are, we know it's a commercial thing that we decide we have to work on, and non-commercial. If I want a solar backyard, I'll have a solar backyard, that's just the way it's gonna be. But whether I can sell in that excess to a company or another is an entirely different thing with the state and all the economic things involved with that, so we need to get something in place. So I have nothing to offer today, just knowledge that we need to start pursuing that, so.
So do, you need to put some kind of a board together?
Yeah, I think we will, I'll talk to Sunday, see if we need to do that, because the state's tried to come a couple times to talk to us, and just nobody was there when that occurred, so we need to get that done, yes.
I see, Jim, we do have some examples from a couple of solar companies.
Great, great. We probably need to put a committee together, and we may get you and your dad in fact involved with that too, just because you've been down that road already. We don't need to reinvent the wheel, and we don't want to be obtrusive to anyone, we don't want to be a barricade to anyone. But I know you understand, we just gotta do this right the first time we do it, because there's gonna be people going off in all directions on these kind of things, so you've gotta have something in place. So I'll get something together on that, and we'll get it, start having some meetings, and figure out where we're gonna go with that, if that works for you.
Yeah, and we've got DES as our foot in Fountain County, I may have been dealing with all that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, if I can take a look at those, and I can tell you that's the hole we need to plug, or else they're gonna, you know, slip through it.
Okay.
Kind of seen it all at this point, personally.
Yeah, bet.
Yeah.
And that was the same thing with Benton County, when they did the windmills, nobody realized that decommissioning those wasn't included in the contract, because you assume they're gonna be there forever, but the landowners were obligated to decommission those and haul them off at their cost. And that was fixed, that went through a lawsuit, and that was fixed, where the company took it on, but according to the way it was written, that million bucks of recycling and destruction was all on the homeowner, not the, not the company. So that was plugged, all the way it's plugged, those things come up, and so you try to tweak as you go. So that didn't exist, but there'll be other things existing, there are so many, so many tentacles going out from this kind of stuff in all directions, you just can't, you can't think of all the things you have to think of. Okay, Chester Craig, about the alley off Webster Street.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
When are we gonna finish closing? Paperwork's been done, I was given thirty days, it's been six months now. Move fence, or whatever he wants to do. Did I offer, I offered to make access to my property anytime?
I don't know who that needs to be, made that offer to, that's nothing that we're doing. Is that what Luke's doing?
No, it was Matthew, but Matthew never did get a certified card. And he's wanting to join, you had to send out cards.
I did everything the attorney did, because your attorney said I had everything, it might duck to an order whenever I did it.
Well, that's where I possibly thought it was, but if you miss a landowner, then you miss a landowner, and they all have to be involved, they all have to be aware. So if Luke never got a registered letter, you should have a record if you got a registered letter or not, so go through your registrations that you got from the post office, there should be a rec, that's why it's registered mail. You should have a record if he did get one or not, and if he didn't, then he just needs to get one.
And when's the closure, the action gonna happen then?
There's no set date, if he disagrees with it, then.
Well, right now, he openly admitted here that he is on county property. I was on county property, I did exactly what your letter said, moved my stuff, his fence is on county property. I'm willing to get my access anytime he wants to go down there. I got no problem with it. I've done everything, all I wanted to do is marry my two properties, reduce my tax, and I don't think there's any reason that we can't do that. I'll sign, I'll sign a riderway for him to go through there anytime he wants.
You need to get with him, and get an agreement with him, and make sure it works out with him, and of course, the other paper.
Well, you know, I mean, he's in violation according to what I was in violation, I was in the wrong. Now, he openly admitted. Now, he openly admitted that he's in the wrong, and he's done nothing.
There is a fence that is on part of the county road.
Yes, it is.
Correct. There is, he hasn't been told to remove the fence, and there's no animals on that side, so if-
Who is telling him to remove it?
Actually, the commissioners give him probation to clean that road out, he has paid and had it surveyed.
Yes, I know he did.
And he paid and had the alley surveyed, so he figured out where it's at, because no one even knew.
Exactly where it was, that's right. They assumed when they sent that letter, I was in the alley.
Is he ready to move there?
I don't have a clue.
Well, we'll find out where we are.
He needs to get home Matthew and deal with him, and-
I don't, otherwise I have to deal with Matthew, because you guys are the ones that said I was black blocking his access. I don't know who turned it in so the lawyer would send me the letter.
He, he had, you have to send him a certified letter to make it legal. You'll get the receipt back from the post office that he received it, the green card.
He received one from the lawyer. I know that, because the lawyer's got those.
Okay, then did he mark it, he was fine with getting closed, or he wanted it left out?
He didn't mark anything, we talked about it, he realized he was in the wrong, just like I was in the wrong.
So Nick, if-
I was definitely in the wrong.
Landowner gets a letter, and then he just doesn't take action, what happens?
My recollection from that meeting, and again, we probably have audio, we could go back and watch, was that they were gonna try to work to resolve their differences, but that Matt had expressed if they get that worked out, that he would have no objection at that point. That's my recollection, obviously, the video will show us more than my recollection will, but there was no, there's no decision made that day from what I remember.
Make a decision.
There was, there was no decision, because-
So is your relationship, is your relationship, plus that you and Matt can sit down and work this out, what needs to be-
Oh, me and Matt can talk and do it.
We'll do that and bring it to us, it's not-
What do I need to bring to you now?
Your agreement, whatever your solution to your problem is, if that's your agreed upon solution to solve that problem, bring it to us, we'll have no obligation to that, we'll have no resistance to that.
You have no resistance.
No, if you guys come and say that's-
I sit down and talk to Matt, and he says it's okay.
We don't have a dog in this hunt, that means nothing to us, I understand the fence is on our property, but nobody knew that, now they do.
Yes.
And if you guys have a solution that can be worked out between, you work that out and come tell us what that is, and we'll approve that, and we'll go on with life.
I'll definitely take the time this weekend, sit down with Matt.
Sounds good, that's the whole answer when you were doing that stuff, just look it up.
I got no problem.
We have none either, it doesn't matter.
He wants to run through there and work on that fence and whatever, you know.
Okay, you guys-
I was given the deadline, that's what kind of upset me, I was given thirty days, then he realized he was in the wrong too.
There you go.
And it's been six months, and, you know, I don't think he's received a certified letter, has he? You're the attorney.
I haven't sent him one.
Yeah.
But-
Never had it twice, I don't think his stuff was in by his way at the time, why I understood, so you guys get that worked out, bring it to us, and we'll just, we'll go along with that, whatever.
You're gonna go along with whatever me and him sit down and do.
I would put it on your chest that I would prove with anything that you put down, but I need to see what you put down, and then we'll prove that, there's no reason not to.
There's three parties involved.
Yes.
Yeah, it has to be all three parties, so.
Who's the other?
Dickey's, is it Dickey's or is it Brown's?
I think it, what it was when the Browers died, the house and that property was left all to girls and Ben. And it was left there that way, so no one would ever in the family not have a place to live.
So-
And this, what they make at the festival is probably divided amongst them, I never have asked.
So it might be four or five of them involved that have to agree with it.
The only muddy part is, we just have to have everybody that's affected by it agree to it and sign an agreement, and we're good to go.
So it'd be all the joining property owners, basically, from the alley.
You know, they was here, I don't even remember, I mean, if you can recall whether they was, they was okay with it or not, I tried to get the attorney just to, my section, that's all I cared about, but he said we ought to do the whole alley, so that was his decision.
I don't really think Matthew's problem lied with you, I think it was more with them, because he needed access to that fence. They want the alley closed, but then they wanted half of the road, which would not give him any access to the fence at all. If you close the alley and the road.
Okay, me and him would sit down and agree that I give him access.
Yes.
And then he's done.
If you have to make an agreement, and we're sure that section could be done.
And put that on page.
I just, I just want to marry the properties, cut my taxes.
And you understand, we don't have any dog, we're not, we're not trying, we have no goal on this thing, other than you guys working this issue out, you get it worked out, all signed up, brought to us, we have no reason not to go along with that.
No problem.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Yes?
Nick, did you get a chance to do that 504 grievance?
We have to have a procedure for a grievance procedure in order to be, I guess, eligible for certain grants, is that what it is?
No, I've already received the grant, the guy needs compliance.
I gotta talk to him about that, actually, I emailed it to him, but we didn't have a chance to talk about it yet.
What I understood, we just need to appoint an officer?
Yeah, you emailed back that you didn't necessarily indicate whether that was the officer you wanted to approve or not.
Yeah, and I don't know either, I mean, I don't know what the duties would be, what the responsibilities would be.
Basically, they're gonna receive a notice of an agreement that somebody's violated their rights under that, and they would make a ruling on that, and then it would, they could appeal to the commissioners board. Or you could designate the commissioners as being that person, but usually our mail goes to the auditor, then the commissioners, is why I had it as the auditor.
So basically, what does that person have to do, just acknowledge that they got received?
They're gonna receive the complaint.
And that's all?
They would say whether or not it's a violation under that, and then they could appeal to you guys. So I don't know if that's who you want to have do that, or how you want-
Anything else on the officers, if there's something we can do, we can do our board.
We could just have it come directly to the board by way of the-
Like a normal mail.
Also have to have a place to appeal that decision, so then who is that next?
So if we are that officer, can we also do the appeals then?
No.
Okay.
Really need to appeal it process, that's why we started with the auditor.
Okay.
I just, we weren't certain where you really wanted that.
And all the order would be doing, just acknowledging and receipt of that grievance.
No, she'd be saying whether or not she feels they violated that.
She'd be making a ruling.
Yeah. I hate to put that on the order unless we had to.
That's right, we really need to have a conversation about it, probably, but it's holding up funding, though.
As soon as possible.
Yeah.
Can we make it one way with the ability to change it at some other point after discussion?
You could, yeah.
Should we make it commissioners for now, and then?
I don't know who our appeal board would be then, though, at that point, is what my concern was, but.
Or, if you don't mind doing it, you just did it, and you're just acknowledging whether you think there's a grievance or not.
Basically, what I'm doing with tort claims and everything else, passing it along.
Okay, and if you're okay with that, then let's, let's go ahead, and I make a motion, and then we appoint the auditor as the grievance officer for 504s.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Will we need anything from you that's like signed?
I'm gonna do a resolution just to clean that up for state board or council, or anybody else that would come in and look at it or anything.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? All right, is there motion to adjourn?